Okay, it's um, city council meeting on. November fifteenth. At six thirty, so um, with that, we'll do the roll calls.
Mayor Acors.
Not chair.
Councilor Bertner.
Here.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Cruz.
Here.
Okay, next is our agenda. And uh, I missed something. I would like to insert a addition under. The number eight, V I I additions, request and communications, I'd like to add. Approval of outstanding citizen award committee recommendation. Under, you know, before unfinished business. After personnel.
I move to approve the agenda, agenda with the addition.
Second.
I'll do that.
Jim Richards. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the amended agenda, agenda signature, saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. It's approved. Next time is a, a canvassing award board. The Minnesota statute reads in part between the third and tenth days after election, the governing body of the city conducting. Any election including a special municipal election. In November shall act as the canvassing board and its return and declare the results of the election. Accordingly, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two. Offer to facilitate the council's action as a canvassing board that is in your packet.
And that's the um. Mayor, that's the one I just revision, I just added you, yes. To add that. The attachment that you received is the actual abstract of all the votes that were cast in the city. So of, um, at seven AM on November eighth. The number of persons registered. Was one thousand one hundred and fifty-six. And the total number that we had actually voting was eight hundred and sixty-seven.
Great, darling.
So that is. What is that percentage response? Very, very good.
Hi.
Yeah. So the um, the abstract I will attach to the resolution. Mayor's calculating.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
That's great, but. Make a motion, we approve. Resolution, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two.
Second. We have to go by.
It's a roll call.
Right, right.
Right.
There's no discussion, see calling the board.
Mayor Acors.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Right.
Councilor Bertner.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you. And then this document does have on. The attachment actually has the signatures, all of you need to sign that page for it. Yes, because you all just acted also not only as city council, but as the canvassing board.
We need to sign this up.
Yep. So just um, make sure that we get that signed before you move, we don't need to take the time right now.
Super, alright, thank you very much.
I have two more.
Thanks.
I apologize for not having the minutes done, so you'll have to go next time, sorry.
For public forum. Public forum is a three-minute time limit per person, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to see business and adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns, you address the city council during public forum. Please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the forms provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. With that, public forum is open, anybody who'd like to speak. Second call for public forum. And third and final call for public forum. The forum is closed at six forty. Sergeant Chambers is not here. Or representative from the sheriff, water and sewer. November eighth meeting was canceled because of the election. Joe, would you want to comment on the contract one project update?
Uh, sure, lots going on, continues to go on at the wastewater treatment plant. Contractor has all of the buildings framed up and essentially sealed in or. You know, enclosed, even the admin building over the last month has kind of come off the ground and been framed up. Um, and so. Uh, lots of work goes on, is going on there with uh, equipment, electrical, mechanical, uh, beginning to be installed. So. That's moving along, the only external work that the contractor really has left on the site are some vaults around the S P R. Uh, building or structure, so um, those vaults are. Um, some of them are precast and they have, have been installed and they're getting um, completed. And then there's some um. Cast-in-place vaults that are also being poured, so they're uh, in the process of being poured and over the next month they'll be completed, so. Um, lots of activity, if the weather kind of gets, improves a little bit. Uh, there's a little bit more pipe work the contractor wants to do before uh, real winter sets, sets, sets in and also some backfilling of the uh, S P R tanks, so. From the perspective of the contractor being able to work through the winter, they're in pretty good shape, but be able to accomplish a lot this winter. With the point at which they are with all the buildings, and so essentially they're right on schedule as to where they want to be. Uh, and getting things done like they plan to get done.
Joe, um, could you just, what's the S V R or S V R? I mean, say.
Oh, that's, that's a, that's a abbreviation for a sequence batch reactor. And so that's part of the treatment process, and within that series of really tanks, there's. Uh, pre-equalization and post-equalization tanks that feed into that treatment process, so it's really the second step after the uh. Pre-treatment building um, that the wastewater cycles through, so lots going on in that structure and, and that's kind of the heart of the treatment process.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Senator, you want to give an update on this year? Any questions, I guess I should ask.
Oh, yeah, when it's at that first building, you go in when we were walking through that.
So we started at the um. At the pre-treatment building at the very top of the hill. And then the next structure, the big, big structure, big rectangular structure is the S P R. And so on the east side of the S P R, there's these um. Pre-cast vaults that are, or cast-in-place vaults that are getting poured.
Thank you.
Um, along with. Splitter box and, and, and different components that on the west side are the cast-in, or the pre-cast vaults. So, and lots of piping, uh, enveloping that gets installed in conjunction with those vaults, water gets. Cycled in and out of the tanks within the sequence battery reactor. It's going to, you know. Um, yeah, we've had a few folks out. And welcome to have you out anytime, uh, it's getting a little colder, but the buildings are enclosed at this point. Lots still of interesting things to see out there, and the sooner that you get to see it, the better, because. Things continually kind of get buried and you, you can't necessarily appreciate everything that has been done and is going on, not that we don't have pictures and. Diagrams and things, but it's fun to see it. Uh, so if you want to see it, send me an email, um, either I can meet you out there or Jeff can meet you there and we'll walk through it.
Can we do Friday?
Um, I think so.
Yeah, because normally they're, they're off, so it'd be easy to do it, right?
Yeah, in fact, Friday's probably. If people are interested, there's less going on out there, the trades are probably still working on Friday, but stop, goes home, they work four days a week. And so it's probably better to tour when there's a little less going on, it's a little less, less hectic out there. Um, so Fridays work best from that perspective.
Do you want that scheduled then? I mean, you want people to just show up, or would you prefer a schedule?
I think that uh, it's best if you call and let me know that they're coming and then we can make sure that, you know. Um.
We have to post it if there's more than two of us out there, so you want to go ahead and post it that way, then.
Do you want to do that? What time are you thinking?
What, what, what's a good time on Friday? Ten, or we did ten or, I think eleven last time, did you share ten or?
Um, I don't think it matters.
Ten?
I don't, I'm not available for eighty. Yeah, I don't, yeah, and, and there's no, nothing, nothing to see, whenever you guys want to come out, you can come out, but I'm just saying.
Rather go to that. And Joe, I know, um, I've seen other projects that as they, as they progress, they've done like a time lapse. Of stuff, are, are we able to do that at all? So, maybe that's something that we.
We don't have a site camera that always is recording on site like some places do, but we have. Obviously have photographs, um, some aerial photographs, um, that kind of provide some type of.
Just in front of, I know that it's kind of cool.
And I've been taking quite a few photographs too.
Yeah, so. Got thousands of pictures.
Yeah, yeah. One question about the admin building, is the, the, the ceilings, I suppose it's drop ceiling in it?
Yes.
Okay, because it looks like they're like.
They're high.
Twenty-foot ceilings, or something like that, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I think they bury some of the duckwork within that, drops here too.
Alright, that's kind of, that's kind of what I thought, but you know.
Yep. Yeah, we noticed that too, uh, last time we were.
Yeah.
Um.
That's, that's amazing.
Contracts two and three.
Um, so, there continues to be a lot of work on contracts two and three, um, we did just issue an update for the project that went out on Friday. Hopefully everybody's getting those, um. I won't go into a lot of detail, because the update really does that, but out of the big picture items, the contractors completed all the work within. The, all the work within this construction season that they're going to do within paved areas. So, moving forward, you know, nearly all the work that they're going to do with the exception of, you know, some gravel driveway crossings are. Work within green spaces, um, so like the outfall to the river, um, some of the sewer improvements through some of the fields. Uh, the sewer improvements along uh, in the ditch along Minnesota Avenue, uh, and in some of the other ditches. So that work will progress until the frost really gets deep and hard. Um, in addition to that, through the winter, we expect that the contractor will be working on uh, lift stations. Only one of the lift stations has been physically installed. Uh, but the rest of them should get installed, or at least that's what they're projecting, and then of course, there's a lot of internal piping. Uh, and mechanical work to be done within the lift station structures, so, so um, contractors planning to get pretty busy through the winter, um, obviously. When we get to January, February, things are somewhat weather dependent, but uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But uh, streets that have been disturbed, have been paved, um. By and large, um, contractors getting mailboxes installed and was up till this week, uh, doing some. Uh, restoration work, we'll see how the weather goes over the next. Month, month and a half, it could warm up and things could be workable again for that type of work or, or not, but we'll see. Um. Questions?
How do you feel about the project, is it, is it basically on schedule from what you're saying, Joe?
You know, it really is up to the contractor in terms of how much effort and how much workforce they want to throw at it next year. Based on what I saw this year, especially early, I think that it's important that the contractor makes some progress this winter. Um, the second half of the construction year, they've got, they got quite a bit of work done. And things progressed, but I think that there's a decent amount of work to do yet, uh, obviously next year. There's a lot of things to get done and they need to make some progress and. Their plan for the winter kind of needs to come to fruition, in my opinion, for them to stand skating.
Let's hope they don't hit as much rock. As they have.
Well, the rock has really been variable and that continues to, you know, be, be a challenge. Um, they have worked through a lot of the most rocky areas, you know, the downtown area, there's going to be some, but there's definitely less than there are in some of the other areas. So they, they've overcome some of those challenges.
Is the blasting all done for what there is off of Minnesota?
Um. You know, I'm not sure, um. I haven't checked in on that specifically, I know they've done a bunch of it, I think that they're planning to do some blasting along. Uh, the entrance to Cedar Woodlands, is that Cedar, Cedar Woods Drive? Cedar Point Drive?
Cedar Point.
Cedar Point Drive? Um, there's some pretty good chunks of rock uh, in there, especially towards the top of that hill. Uh, and then coming down towards Minnesota Avenue, so I think they will drill and blast that uh, before they leave. I, I, I don't know exactly where they're at on the, on the blasting.
Okay. And Joe, we have a letter that you sent in your packet regarding those pressure sewer props and orders.
Right, and I have, I wanted the council to kind of see what we were planning here. In terms of, there are about a dozen property owners that have yet to sign the low-pressure. Sewer access easement maintenance agreement. And so, um. You know, we've, we initiated the process, you know, almost. You, you know, was it like in the spring of? Twenty-one, maybe even March of twenty-one, so. We've been at this quite a while and, and obviously the vast majority of people have signed, but. Uh, there remains to be a handful of folks that um, don't appear to be interested in signing. Uh, they've been contacted recently by phone, some of them have expressed interest in indeed executing the document, but we've kind of promised things before and they don't show up. And so the thought is, is that we're going to take one more push and see if we can get people to sign, uh, and. What I plan to do, and I put a draft of this letter together, because I wanted you guys to kind of see it, Sunny and I have talked about it. Um, I will send this letter out, I'll send a new copy of the agreement out, the same agreement that we've set before. We had to update it because the dates have changed and Sunny uh, is new here and she's a signator on the agreement. As a city administrator rather than Geraldine. Um, so we've, we've, we've done that, and then uh, I've updated a frequently asked questions document, same agreement, or same document that we had before, just with. You know, a little bit of updated information in terms of dates and things like that, so I'd like to send this out, um, the letter essentially outlines. What's been done and where we're at and, you know, really the ramifications if they choose not to sign. I think that it's important to have a deadline, uh, we really need to impose a deadline because the contractor is either going to. Order eighty-four lift stations, or if it needs to be seventy-five lift stations or whatever, you know, they're not go to Menards and pick them off the shelf, they're order them. And hope to have them by, you know, June when we're installing them, so.
What's the alternative? Let's say they don't sign. Are we ordering them anyway and then they pay full price?
Um, the alternative essentially is if they, if they don't grant us the easement, we can't build anything on their property. And so the alternative is, the ordinance says that if you don't grant the easement. The obligation to complete that connection doesn't go away. The property owner has to secure contractor, purchase the materials, pay the contractor to install those.
At a hundred percent of the cost.
At a hundred percent of the cost.
And they have one year to do it, from what I was saying, is there any way we could do it by certified mail or registered mail that we know that at least they've gotten it and?
I think I can get it in the liberal.
Okay, that's what I was saying to ask.
There's only a dozen of them, right?
I was going to ask that, and I was going to ask also if, if there's a way to confirm that there isn't one, some sort of language barrier. Um, some sort of um, cognition barrier or some sort of like. Um, physical barrier that are, is limiting some of these people from coming here to sign these things.
I think some of it is, because some of the people even said, you know, we get so much, we see so much, we don't read. You know, we, we didn't read it and. Then all of a sudden, we're having meetings and so, let's just hope it's more of that.
Yeah, because once I think that they realize what it's going to cost them. You know, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars is pretty expensive.
That's the city's cost too, I mean, that's what it costs to have eighty-five of these installed, so if. An individual goes out to have this done, the chances of them getting it done for that are slim.
And, and you have physically visited these homes before, correct?
I have not, Linda has, Linda around.
Okay.
I will deliver these or, or one of my.
Okay.
Inspectors here in town and follow up with them.
And is there any, from your knowledge, is, is any of the things I mentioned before an issue?
I, I think everybody's English speaking and I don't recall that anybody's gravely ill or unable to. Address this, not, not that's at top of mind, that there is, so I'm not aware of those types of issues.
So have you, have you received communication from anybody who said that they do understand it? And they are affirmatively choosing not to sign?
Yes, one.
Okay.
One, but then two months later, he said he'd sign it.
Okay.
But then, six months goes by and I've not, not received it, so, you know.
Well, and then, so then what's the deadline? Is the construction company giving you a deadline by which they need to know the number? Or is it just sort of, or will they give you a deadline, like?
So I'm, I'm saying that it's, the deadline is the end of the year and then we have to be able to tell the contractor, it's, you know, seventy-eight units or eighty-two units or eighty-five units or whatever, that. They've got to have a reasonable amount of time to secure these materials. Um, you know, we've, we've been working towards this for quite a while, um, if you remember back in. June, I think we originally imposed the deadline of like, August or September, if I remember correctly.
So then, and just to be clear, like, the city has to sign these easements, so everybody understands, so. I mean, there, there will come a point at which the city refuses to sign it and record it, and then you're just left on your own. So it's important that they know that, that they can't, I mean, anytime there's deadlines that keep getting pushed back, people think. What is this, you know, it is what it is, it's bureaucratic government nonsense and we'll just do what we want and. Like, there really is a deadline here, so.
And I, within the letter, explained that the contractor needs to order the materials, this is, this is it.
Yeah, I thought that was, and I.
Hopefully that makes sense to people.
Yeah, that was very good too, yeah.
Well, and then the ordinance too, like, there's a fee established after the time period, they can act if they don't connect.
We do make mention of that in the letter as well, on the second page of the letter. Um, Sunny and I kind of visited about it and we included a little acknowledgement, you know, if you don't want to do this and you want to say, I got the letter, I understand the letter. I don't want you to contact me anymore, I'm just not doing it.
I like.
Sign it and send it back and, you know.
And I like that that's in red, so that.
But they're going to, that's good, so they're going to sign it and acknowledge that they do not want the service.
That's what we.
I agree with that.
That's, that's what we proposed there, and Mike, if you, you would be willing to look at that language, I would happily, you know, I just made it up.
I don't think that there's any legal significance to it, but I do think. You know, there could be a situation where.
Well, there might be, if they don't hook up, the city goes after them, you know, it's all.
The city isn't going after them, I mean, the city is just going to assess, you know, one year after.
They got a year, yeah.
And then if they don't connect it.
If they don't connect. We want to make sure we got ground so we can go ahead.
Yeah, and I think we are on strong legal footing to assess utility costs, I mean, I think every city does that, but they. Yeah, okay, I think that's, sending a letter is good, sending an acknowledgement, you know, some, either an acknowledgement and receipt or. Like you're saying, I'll look at it, but, you know, some sort of affirmative statement that they are not going to sign it, so we know to move on, you know, we're not. Screwing around with it at this point, so.
So, I wanted to just put this in front of the council so that you guys saw it. And if, if the consent says send it out, I'm, I'll send it out by the end of the week.
I'd like the delivery, if you're willing to hand deliver it, I think I would.
For a dozen people, you know, most of them are.
And some of them, you even visited and showed where the line would go.
Right.
As you walk the line forward.
Did you ever find out anything about what you talked about? Or asking, put water around it?
Uh, it is possible, so one of the things that we've been kind of thinking about, um, Carl brought up to me as well is. On these parcels where there is rock and there are grinder stations going in, they also, many of them have water services, and so one of the things that we could do. Um, is install a water pipe in the same trench as the sewer service. And a joint trench, and so that would limit them on a rock that needs to be done.
Right.
Now. We would do that at a cost. The property owner, we'd probably have to have some sort of an agreement with the property owner to do this. And my thought is, is that we just install that pipe where sewer pipe's going and, you know, they'd have to have a plumber come in and make the connections at the two ends. You know, and any extra trenching, but we could at least get it pretty darned close. It seems like that as merit, it would save the property owner money.
How many people would that affect?
Um. I, I'd have to do the math, fifty, seventy, something like that, the majority.
Be, because it's, it's just for the ones that have the grinder station.
Yes.
And it's there, other people, no.
The ones with the solid rock.
No, just the grinders.
Yeah, but if we're talking about uh, solid rock, then where they light up, water line.
Well, even if they don't, I mean, it.
Yeah, you could still do it.
You could still do it.
Solid rock.
So.
You just don't have to have some.
It's gender separation, it's still have, no. Don't need that.
Not on individuals.
Oh, it's a matter of the way she. I had a couple of comments on the.
You can.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to, the very last sentence on the first page. Can you confirm if that is supposed to be July twenty twenty-four? The very last two words.
July dates. I think you're right, it says, the connections in July of twenty twenty-three with a connection must be completed within these parcels by July of twenty twenty-three.
That's, that's the one year that they have.
It should be twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right, good, good catch, thank you.
So Joe, that's regarding that July twenty twenty-three date. I must have misunderstood, I thought after. Plant was operational in July. In July and October or sometime, that's when the grinder stations would be put in, but it's before July. Is that correct?
Well, the connections will be available, we'll, we'll start making those tie-overs in July.
Of those, so the grinder stations are installed before July. Grinder stations for the eighty-five are after the July.
No, they'll start in July of twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, because they have to be in before it's operational, right? Before they turn the pipe on.
Well, kind of once you get on somebody's property and you start sinking the grinder station and tying things over, I mean, they, they literally have to. Once they, once they intercept that pipe and they bring it to the grinder station, everything downstream of the grinder station has to be live.
Right.
And so they're going to start tying those over in July.
I think that's what I was looking for, is the word starting in July of twenty twenty-three.
The last, last sentence, or second last sentence.
So instead of to be available, starting to be available.
Or are you saying right, connections starting in July of twenty twenty-three?
It's okay about, the sewer system is supposed to be available and operational, but connections starting in July of twenty twenty-three.
So maybe that, maybe you don't mean low pressure, maybe you need, mean the.
No, I do mean low pressure, yeah.
Which is a grinder part of the low pressure.
The whole system will be available.
But they're not. You're saying that.
So it's.
They're not, those aren't going to be available right away, there, there is going to be a lap.
Well, they, they'll start, we'll start tying the grinder station, the low-pressure sewer system. Well, they they'll start, we'll start tying the grinder station, the low pressure sewer systems will start to become live in July. Now, obviously, they won't all happen at once. And in fact, you know, it could be October until we're done. In fact, that's when they're supposed to be done. We've got to give the contractor a a window to work. So then we got July, August, September, October, really four, four months to complete eighty tieovers. Or eighty, eighty, eighty systems.
So then, when you put the grinder system in, then the homeowner still responds to it for the tank.
We're gonna cave them in?
Yep, and it lists, yeah, lists all the things we're gonna do, right, right, right in the letter, but yeah, we with with signing this agreement, we um, we pump and abandon those tanks.
They better. I definitely sign it.
Sign it quick.
Yeah.
But to Ryan's point, so are we seeing then connections starting in July?
Yeah, I will, I I think that's the simplest word is starting in.
I I think Mike's got a couple of comments to be going on with this.
Just a couple. I mean, the one I had, we was, we can go over it later, we don't have to. I mean, just, what is, I just think we should highlight this this sentence, these two bold sentences, and just really highlight the fact that that is the deadline, like that's it, that's the deadline. And this is why that's the deadline, the contractor is buying this stuff. And then I would put that with this under bold sentence and put that as a separate paragraph, so they, cause that's the main thing, I mean, this is kind of it. So then I had a question on this first sentence, I'm not sure. It says each property owner receiving a low pressure system is required to execute a permanent access easement. I don't think they are required to. I think it's a choice, and if they choose not to.
Well, they're required to for us to do anything. If they choose not to, then
Correct.
we don't do anything.
Yeah, so I think it should say something like, if you want us to construct this.
Be part of the project.
To be part of the project, you must sign. I don't think that they're actually, the the one property owner I think you're talking about.
So if you read it, it says you you're required to execute the agreement to allow the city to construct, operate and maintain the system. That is hundred percent true.
Okay.
If you don't do it, we can't construct, operate, maintain the system on serving your property.
And then, so then the question, I I guess the next question is logical, next question is if they construct it. There's no easement and they just pay a contractor to go construct it. The maintenance of the system will terminate then at the curb stop at their property. Yeah, I think that's.
I think it says that in here too.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the top of the next page.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, I forgot the next page, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all I had. I just would highlight that. I think it's fine, although the first page is fine otherwise, I just highlight really bold and highlight that, cause they you know, it's, it would be a shame to be honest if people didn't get this paid for at the reduced cost and.
It's free.
You know.
Oh, wow. They're they're part of the project, so.
Yeah.
You know, they they've all been contacted, all of them, multiple times.
In multiple letters about what happens if you don't assign.
Everybody was asking that day for
Yes.
A grinder station, I'll take one.
Even some who would have paid it for one.
And then the other part is the pumping too, right? So if they're part of the project. You know, each individual property owner is not gonna be pumping and abandoning their subject, or will they? Or will the city be doing that as part of the project, I guess then.
Only on low pressure.
Only on low pressure, okay.
Other than the gravity they're under.
But if it's a gravity one, that will be not done for that.
We're not doing, obviously, we're not doing work on private property inside of a low pressure.
The very first bullet, or bullet, the property owner will be, still be assessed for all wastewater system fees. Um, does that need to have a clarifier? Something to the point that the, this is the curb stops at each property? They know exactly what those fees mean. They are getting curb stops at their property line, correct? But they're they're having to pay a late monthly fee down in the underlying portions.
So the wastewater's fees that I'm referring to are the plant investment fee, the sewer availability charge and the laterals, lateral um sewer charge. Though, but it does, you know, the the, obviously, the curb stop has something to do with that, but that's just part of many things associated with a lateral sewer connection charge.
They've all known, everybody gets this curb stops, whether you have a gravity or low pressure system. Yeah, if the word assess, I guess that's the, I missed that really part, but. I think your bullets are all very straightforward. The part that's underlying in the, into that first sentence will be charged a monthly fee. Should we put charged a monthly late fee?
It's not a late fee, it's just a fee. Fee because they'll get a late fee on top of the charge if they don't pay the first turn, but.
But this is the, this is the.
This is the usage fee, right, that we're just going.
Eighty-three dollars monthly fee.
No.
It's not eighty-three dollars.
Seventy-five dollars plus. We haven't.
Well, yeah, we haven't. But that's what we did it for water, was like, it was like seventy-five dollars, and the reason was is we wanted to make, make there be some incentive, it should be more than what you would be paying for your sewer cost typically.
Which is why you said it would likely exceed the typical.
Exactly.
So the one other thing I would say, I would recommend is doing a, like an affidavit or like personal service, not really that, it's not service, but just hand delivery, like a certificate of hand delivery. I can prepare that and send it, just a little, one little paragraph on a page, just in case they refuse to sign it. Then we can certify that we gave it to them, um, just so we have a record that we personally delivered this final letter. Um, and I'm not sure. Yeah, you can make one, it's not, I mean, I just, I'm I'm not sure it matters, but I think we should make sure.
I think we should, it's a good idea just to protect us, you know, cause that'll come back.
And honestly, the ordinance speaks for itself, to be honest, so, but I I think we should, just so we can if there's any confusion later on about they didn't get it, you know.
We we do affidavit and mailing for all of the public hearing stuff, I can do the same.
Yeah.
Type of.
Correct, correct.
For these.
Um.
We will have to mail some of them because some of them don't live in Orinoco. There are two or three residents.
Registered or certified, then that way we could.
Well, I would take the ones in Hawaii. Um, might I suggest, um, just to keep meeting moving too, um, if if you agree in concept and maybe just leave the wordsmithing to Joe and Mike and myself or something, but I I think everybody's in agreement that this is, and I know the last time we did a s- a letter um, that Joe prepared for signature by the mayor, myself and himself, I think that was pretty successful. And so that was kind of the, the um impetus for doing it this way as well. I know, this, this is getting serious and we're getting down to the deadline, so that that would be my recommendation to council.
Well, you notice that we've set that a couple of days, we're out in the City Hall and people can come in, uh, hopefully city staff can be here too and.
November.
Honorize.
Yeah, then November thirtieth and December eighth.
Yep.
So I make a motion, we approve the proposed low pressure sewer access easement and maintenance agreement and frequently asked questions. And if you can get your comments to Joe or to um Sonny as soon as possible, that'd be great, by Friday. Sound good?
Friday's good.
You have a motion in the second?
Any other comments?
Sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next item was a uh, any objections to phase one, a weight water system water distribution improvement assessments?
I left that under yours, they, but they they think, and I'm glad Mike is here as well, um, cause I know one of the things that we had discussed after um adopting the resolution that adopted, approved the assessment role. Right. You had, you had questioned um whether or not we should have made a statement with regard to any objections that might have been raised in there.
And were there objections?
There were um.
Comments, I don't think any objections.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they they have to make an objection, like a formal objection, they have to say I object, and I think you getting to the Orinoco Estates meeting, when you, you know, I was commenting beforehand, the meeting today, you've made a good question of Mr. Wheeler, their their representative, do you object? And he have affirmatively stated he did not object, and so you know, people have the right, it's in all the notices we send out, they have a right to file a written objection before or at the meeting, they have a right to state a written objection. If they're just questioning, you know, asking questions or, you know, saying they disagree with the sewer expansion project or whatever, that's not an objection. So I think if if somebody says I object to my assessment or something that is equivalent of that, then you have to note and pass on the, what's known as pass on the objection. You know, basically not accept their objection, or you can choose to accept it and change their assessment. Which happens sometimes in situations like high water bills when pipes break. Sometimes city councils will be like, wow. We're gonna give you a break on that. You objected to your assessment of ten thousand dollars, cause you're a snowbird and we're in Florida and your pipes burst, we're going to note your objection and alter your assessment. So you only need to pass on the objection if there was an objection made. I wasn't there, but that's the comment I would make, and I think they should really be done in writing, and if nobody made a written objection, you know.
Is it deferment request the same as an objection?
That's a separate statutory request that they have a right to make, and you sent a deferment and noticed a deferment out, I think, right, or a form that they can fill out, or I saw one.
Yeah, you know, they're informed to contact the city administrator if they
Yeah.
were interested in that, and Sonny has disseminated
Yeah.
uh, applications for deferment of people that have requested them.
And I likely think you didn't get an objection. I think you would know if you got an objection to an assessment.
There was, at least one paper turned in.
I I think we got, in in my view, okay, two people after the meeting wrote something down that they didn't, that they objected to. Well, one was more an objection to the whole project.
Right.
One was um an objection to the assessment, don't you think, um, Joe? Was the auto guy?
Yeah, Joe, you know, the mechanic, whatever.
Maybe it's Joe.
Yeah, I can't remember his name. And and his objection really was only not on the the entire assessment. Simply the water piece of it, cause he's already got water access by virtue of the roundabout way.
Yeah, I mean, so did you, what happened after the meeting, after the public hearing?
Also passed the resolution.
And then, no, you got those objections then after the council acted?
Yep.
Well, then you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
That's why you're supposed to object in writing beforehand or at at the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, so.
So, and that's why I had this listed as an action item, because if you, if you wanted to do anything.
No, I didn't know those facts. I didn't know those facts. If the objections you received were after the council already voted, how can you possibly note the, and pass on the objections? You, you've already acted, you can't unact at that point.
Essentially, if the council's passing on the objection, I approve the resolution.
Right, that's kind of. But then they did that, I mean, sometimes you have the public hearing and then the the resolution would be tonight, like, but you did it all at that same. Yeah, so then then you're fine.
That's a non-factor, thank you.
Couple of dates, it's number fourteen and fifteen that Joe referenced earlier.
And those are just available to you, so, and I understand you're on the list serve, so you all get it electronically ahead of time, so I don't know that I.
Next item is a resolution for Orinoco Estates Little Home Community, proving the joint agreement with township or Orinoco Estates Little Home Community Special Assessments collected by county for township to be paid directly to the city. This resolution came from. Initially, it was gonna be um, county sends it to the township, township sends it to the city. And the township raised the question, why can't we go from the county directly to the city? Sonny investigated and found out we couldn't be sent directly to the city.
Great, the the county's willing to do that, then.
The request came from the township
Yeah.
to the county, and then, so this basically says, yeah, that's that's process, and we're minimal.
Well, that's way better for us, you don't have to worry about the timing of getting the money and that kind of thing, so.
So the township proved that resolution that you have in front of you at last night's their meeting last night after we had the public hearing for Orinoco Estates. Uh, the assessment for public hearing. Or public hearing for assessment.
So I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three. You hear the comments? Call roll.
Mayor Ankorst.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Furpen.
Aye.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Crisp.
Aye.
Thank you.
Fire department. See all of the FYIs there? It doesn't look like there's any action items from us, is that correct?
Correct, the only question I have is um with regard to um the payroll piece of it, because I'm not um as a rural bond of paying in advance. So if this is intended to run through the end of the year. Um, okay, so my understanding is that the request has been that in the past the checks are cut in advance of Thanksgiving, so the people have and I believe that's true of council as well. So um, so again, now my preference that I'm not fond of uh paying in advance, so if um, so I'm looking for a clear council direction on how they want um that to be paid. Because if I'm cutting checks to you all through the end of the year, but December hasn't happened yet, um.
Cause we are talking and we're talking about our uh special meetings, we'll get to that a little bit later in the meeting.
Right.
Right, so this wouldn't include the runs for December.
Although for the fire department, they are clearly saying that theirs is running, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
So that.
So it's an honor system as well, because they count meetings. Oh, no, this is from eleven, okay, ours is from, ours is from January.
Yeah. So, this just raised the question for me. But I, what we should do, yeah, but we can talk about that later. So that's all just FYI. Yeah, but I did wanna make note of um Pat McGovern's reassignment. And Jimmy, you maybe know when that actually, is that October thirty-first then, or?
So Pat, so I I came in after that, I think Kane could fill us in. I came in the meeting after that, it was discussed.
What's his retirement date?
I looked through some notes.
Oh, yes.
I'll get it to you.
Okay, and you, it can be offline to everyone.
We need a mo- a motion to acknowledge his retirement, we're not approving it, we're just acknowledging it for the record.
I don't know, you need a motion to do that.
You should never accept resolutions or resignations by vote, so he's not exactly resigning, he's retiring.
You resigned from the fire relief. Fire department?
You don't have to vote on it.
Um, okay, first responders. FYI payroll bills.
Anything transparency, just keeping you informed of where it's been.
So, in terms of payroll, where did where did we land, are we not doing it ahead?
They're not requesting it ahead, she was kind of, she was kind of.
Oh, you're just talking about it, okay, okay.
For our own, for our own council.
Fire department first responders runs from one November to end of October, so it's okay.
Okay, so that's not really.
It's not an issue.
Not for them.
Okay, I thought you were saying never wanting that attention, okay.
Down to public works. Some generator, I answered the. Three, four letters. In uh in the packet regarding things required for. Background, the issue and recommendations. Does anybody have any questions about those? Any question?
Yeah, the only question I had is is, oh, do we have the budget for that, for the share, is the plan or?
Which which item?
Well, I can understand a few of my, yes, I was looking more at um. The transfer tank pump.
Yes. So do you wanna take them right in order? As action items, or do you wanna do them all at once?
But to do them in order.
So the first one is an additional request for. More money than what. Needed, but it's moving from a replacement to, I mean, a repaired.
I make a motion, uh, go forward with a new pump. Fortunately, we don't really have a choice, but it's very important to have a backup generator.
Is there any timeframe for this?
Uh, the the pumps are available, the parts and components to rebuild the pump were not available, so. That's what's got us to this step to today, so. They are available.
Okay, so.
I would say within a week, we should be up and running.
Are we gonna take the? Are we still paying for the travel for them coming, or are you gonna take the generator down there?
Generator is at John here, Rochester. So they're they're waiting for this new pump. They're a decision, yep.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the uh purchase of the new one, new fuel pump, signify by saying aye. Pose. Diesel transfer tank.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. I've looked around, walked the places. That's what I will stay under, I will not exceed twenty-five hundred.
Do we need it?
What's that?
Do we really need it?
Well, yeah, we do, right now, we're getting our diesel fuel at uh Rochester, Tronson Oil.
You can get it here at the gas ago.
We've had, so that's that's what caused the generator problems, is the all the biodiesel fuel. So that in turn had caused issues with the generator, so. Since then, we've switched to throns and diesel fuel and it's been great. Uh, but the damage was done to the generator, so.
I find it hard to believe, you know, you know, all the semis run up and down the road with it. Our tractors, you know, Toronto claims these have better fuel and. Standard Oil claims they got better fuel, and Casey's claims they got better fuel. But, you know.
So I I think too, the the idea is is we'd have it available for the generator in in the event of an emergency. You know, have that. Fifty to a hundred gallons on hand to run the generator for extended time. If the power is out, will the gas stations have have fuel? So it's just, it's just. Another component, another part of having a redundant system. We can have a generator, but if we don't have fuel for it.
But that fuel goes bad in tanks.
Right.
I mean, if you got, uh, if you got, I don't know how big a tank you're looking at here, but if you got fifty-two hundred gallons of fuel. How long, how much, how long is it gonna take you to burn up fifty-two hundred gallons of diesel?
Uh, we should be able to go through a a tank a month. So I I don't see a problem with the the age of the fuel, I don't see that being a problem, uh. It's gonna help us out just having it available when we need it. Uh, right now, we're using five gallon cans and, you know, it's just, it's just cumbersome right now and.
Will this tank stay in the truck?
This tank could be in the truck.
Foreverly all the time.
Yep, it'd be mobile, it'd be hooked up to a pump, it uh. Like you said, we can uh put good fuel in it and uh use it in our uh Bobcat as well. So it's not just for the generator, it will be used for our Bobcat, so.
Certainly the fuel, though, that's I think.
Yeah.
Would it be available to the fire department if they needed it?
Sure could, sure could, I know those trucks take diesel fuel and and uh. Definitely.
And you said this is, you have money in the budget.
Yep, I do, I've got it uh listed here as a shop, fuel, equipment, supplies. But then again, you could, my next note there is split it with the water utility as well, if that, if that was an option and. If that, if Sunny would be open for that discussion.
To me, I think it makes sense. I make a motion that we we get the tank. Makes sense, you're not running back and forth with five gallon cans, if say a piece of equipment runs out of fuel. Um, you've got it, it's mobile.
And in the future, with these lift stations, there is potential for uh generators to be hooked up to them and. So I I think the need for that generator will increase with with the city sewer, so.
Well, I'll I'll give a second to that motion, I agree with with that, that the. The power's out, you don't get gas.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I guess I just like, you know, I think it's a good idea to get it after Kane explained it, but I'd like Sunny to talk to the insurance company. Because I mean, we got all ordered not to keep any fuel inside a building, but. For, call the insurance company to make sure they're okay with it.
Oh, having it in the.
Inside a building.
Oh, in the building.
Being it's a heated building there.
Yep, and I.
If you leave it outside in cold storage.
Yeah, and I think I think I've had some discussions with, of course, Terry Tronson, but uh, you know, my first, my initial thought was, do you have a tank? On site, have Terry come out and fill it, have five hundred or a hundred gallons on site. Well, that kind of opens up cans of worms, so having a mobile. Tank, I think there's some different, but yes, insurance would be a. Good phone call.
Be in the shop today, because we got a tank up there in Carolina, but we gotta keep it out in cold. It may be diesel. Diesel might be different, you know. Or it's gas.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. That's approved. Our um annual replacement of the mower, the next item. Direct replacement.
Yep, direct replacement, uh, yep, they're all the mowers are the same, they ride the same, they cut the same, they. They're all the same, so uh. They've been a proven machine for us, uh, I believe this is the eighth one we bought from from Hilltop. So they had a very good record with us, so I'd like to move ahead with replacing the. Our uh twenty nineteen model has three seasons on it. And then, of course, next year, there'll be another one available and following year and. This one, uh, this one's got a little bit more, about seven hundred. But hopefully, try to keep it right at that two hundred per year. But it seems like each year, I don't know, we we cut more, there's just more more to do or.
So you're talking sixteen dollars for a lawnmower and then we got the mower to sell.
Yep, so so the trade in.
Then we trade that in.
Nope, this this would be the trade in here, if if you look, the new mower is sixteen five forty-six. And uh Hilltop Bill has has proposed a trick, proposed a trade in value of sixty-five hundred. So the net cost would be the ten thousand forty-six.
But if we don't wanna trade it in, what do I have?
Well, I would just assume traded in. I I I think it's, I think it's fair value. There's there's ups and downs, we could try to sell it outright, I think this is.
Seven hundred hour mower, you know, it's pretty good money, if we're paying seventeen thousand dollars. For one, I'm sure you you can get eight, nine dollars.
Yeah, I maybe, I I don't know, I I, like I said, I think. The research I've done, this is a a fair price, this is a an honest price, so.
I I paid eleven for a used one, I paid eleven grand for.
Right, good, I, that's why I think, you know, like the tool cat, I made two thousand dollars buying it, you know. And. I had, there's absolutely no way the city could lose money on keeping it and selling it. You know, and I think we got a good chance to make it three, four thousand dollars, if it's only got seven hundred dollars on it.
Yeah, that's.
Then the other problem is, is we gotta sell it, you know. Have we, have we done anything like that before, have we sold outright?
We we've always traded in with with Hilltop Repair.
Oh, yeah.
So they've always had a a new mower for us and we've traded off the oldest, so.
By keeping the larger of the warranty and.
Yeah, for this part, yeah. And then, you know, what's what's happening with this one that we're gonna, that we, that I would like to trade in or 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 upgrade is. It's it's starting to show its its age, things are happening to it, it's been broke down several times this year, so. If we can get rid of it before it starts having these issues, just gonna save on downtime. I I I don't disagree with you, Carl, I I think there's potential. I just think this is a. Like you said, Jim, we gotta sell it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we ought to keep it put out on bid, I mean. We can't lose money, I'll guarantee you. Because that's a steal, you you just said, and I mean. It'll bring more than that, guarantee you. It ain't a gamble, I mean, if we're buying new lawnmowers for a living. Let us try and make that lawnmower cheaper.
So the sixteen five forty-six, that is the state uh contract price. So that mower. You could, you could definitely add two thousand to that mower, that would be the the retail price.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, a tractor with eighteen thousand or more with seven hundred dollars on it should be worth.
Yeah, I I I have no.
The thing I like about what we're doing here, and we've been doing it for multiple years, is that we, one, we've got the relationship with Hilltop. And two, we, you know, we traded in and it's not a, not that we can't work with trading it in. And um holding that money until we buy it next year. But there is a budget process of, maybe we forget where that money is, we use it for something else and all of a sudden, we have to buy a mower and it's. Seventeen thousand dollars outright. Um, because we, for whatever reason, you know, so.
You know, I mean, if the money's gonna get.
Go ahead, Doc.
If the money's gonna get misappropriated, you know, I mean. If the lawnmowers, you know.
That's the risk we take, this is a package deal. We sell it, we trade it in, we get a new mower, away we go, we do the same thing for next year and we don't have to worry about. The funds of, if the funds are gonna be there next November, when we're gonna buy it.
I'd like to put it in, I guess we'll wait till, or I guess we're to comment, I'd like to put it in my record. For the taxpayers of Orinoco, if it gets my will, knowing we can get more for that mower. Then the, then he says it's a government contractor saying.
Right, it's it's.
You know, sort of, lawnmower got no bearing to Earl, to whoever, whoever Hilltop.
Well, maybe this doesn't play into it, Carl, but uh, you know, this mower, we're, it was supposed to be here in July. And it just showed up last week, so the availability of this mower, this model that we currently have. Uh, we were thinking that we weren't gonna get it, so I'm I'm glad to see that it is available, uh. There has been some shortage of this mower and these, the components that go with it, so.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase of this mower and trading it in. Towards a new board from uh Hilltop Repair. Your second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments? It's a good mower, we know him. Inside and out, I hate to see his, I'm not saying we'll ever, we're gonna go to something different. But at the same time, I think it's a good program that we're in and.
Is there, do we have a process for, I know we've, the fire department has sold. Equipment in the past, do we have a process for that?
Process.
Yeah, they put it all on.
Buy it from the state, we use state contract.
No, 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 selling our equipment.
Selling our disposal as opposed to that acquiring.
Right, I'm just wondering if we. If we have, you know, if we have a process, if if there's something.
In the past, we sold stuff on Craigslist, maybe the state site or.
Well, I'm just curious is 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 to, if this, does, since the motor is in, do you need to make, go forward with this right now, or is it worth seeing?
I guess what I'm asking the council tonight is to is to move forward with this purchase and trade in. For this more, more replacement.
But I mean, you know, it's hard to say here, and you're asking money and. I mean, I'm feel there's twenty-five to three thousand dollars being left. Out there that he's gonna get, and this is a government deal, it ain't that he gave us a special deal on it. And. You know, you took your fire trucks up to an auction, you know, and there ain't no doubt, like Jim said. The mower, he bought one something similar, he paid eleven thousand dollars usually. You know, I would sure, I don't have no qualms in buying no mower. But I would sure like to see the city get the money they can, and I know it'll bring more than that.
Probably not the most optimal time for buying a mower. In December, they're trying to sell a mower either too, for that matter.
Right.
But I mean, they're gonna use the money, he said till next fall, so if we keep the mower till spring and put it out there. You know.
All right, any other comments?
The other thing is, if we were gonna do it that way, Carl, do we have it in our budget to be able to pay for the sixteen thousand?
Without the trade in, because you're you're saying just pay it for it outright without the trade.
Carry it over.
I just don't know if we have that in there. You know, because I mean, ultimately, I'm sure that we could trade it back in if we couldn't get more out of it than that, that they would probably pick it up. Jim was just looking at some of the stuff.
Because here's, here's one, I mean, to Carl's point, I get it, I mean. But can we carry it over, here here's one, it's the same mower. It has five hundred forty-five hours for ninety-seven.
Yeah, so. Any other comments?
I was just gonna say, you do have budget information available to you too.
At the end.
You don't have budget information.
We do now.
It didn't always such.
You might not always have minutes, but.
We, I didn't bring my glasses, like.
Didn't get that far in looking at all the budgets, okay?
Or you could table this too, because it's, it's the next chapter.
Yeah, we could table it, I'm not sure. We don't lose this more either, I'm assuming there, if it's been on, if it's been. This long and getting it here, I'm sure somebody else would take it, if we can't buy it now, we don't lose that either.
Always a possibility, yep.
I don't think he's gonna sell it short.
All in favor of the motion to proceed with mowing or buying the mower from Hilltop, signify by saying aye, aye? Pose?
Do you mean, can I just ask a clarification, just buying the mower outright or with the trade in?
With the trade in. That was in the motion, okay. So, we'll start. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Say aye with the discussion. I, I've got a question, so go ahead.
Um, go ahead with your question you have.
Okay, yeah. So my, my question is. Okay.
We've had discussion and stop.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that was.
To the nays, no.
Yeah, I'll say nay.
We have, who I, I do.
I was looking for the budget, line item budget that there is that we have, what do we have left on? And about discussion, I'm just asking a question, but that open for discussion, please.
Um, well. You're proposing that it comes out of parks and rec?
Correct.
Which is on page.
I'm looking too, that's right.
The second to the last page.
We have fourteen.
Don't have the money.
Forty-five, one, two hundred and forty-two, nine oh three. Refuse thirty-eight percent of the budget. Yeah, budget forty-four thousand, fourteen thousand eight hundred left.
And again, this goes through October thirty-first.
So there are funds for.
Well, not the full sixteen.
Call to the city's ten.
Correct.
Cause I mean, we're gonna have no foul.
Well, that's for next year. And we're looking.
Funds left over.
So is everybody voted?
No, I'm just trying to see if there's any other funds we could do, cause I think you're right, that if we lose that mower. We could be waiting till August next year and miss the whole mowing season of what's going on. You know, on, on doing it to make sure that we at least get the, the new mower. You know, if we're looking at trying to sell the old one, but to be able to do.
I'm adding the comment.
You know, it's. So the discussion's over, so what is your vote?
Let's get it.
That's nice, okay. The motion is approved with three ayes. So go ahead and. Motion's approved, so.
Okay, nope. Thank you. Uh, last uh, last request I have for you is a uh. Request for a, an iPad and a Horizon service plan. And uh, this would be similar to what the fire department and first responders have done just recently. It could be very beneficial to, to have a mobile device in the field and, and uh. Especially with all the construction going on this year and, and next year. So really, the price of the iPad, I mean, I can buy that within my budget, but it's more the, the plan, the contract. The ongoing expense that, that council needs to be aware of.
So Kane, could you talk a little bit about why, or you know, what you would have on it?
So, so like right now, there's almost eight hundred pages of. Contracts one, two, and three in the back of my truck, right? So I wanna look at something of, for the project, what's going on, where they're moving next. Anything, right? I have to search through three different contracts, search through all the pages. Uh, Stan Tech's engineers, inspectors, they have the iPads, it's. They can search, they can, they can really fly through the, the documents. And with that, we would also be able to put on our current infrastructure, water projects, developments. It, it, it just, it just seems like a no-brainer, get away from the, the paper maps and go to a searchable. iPad, mobile device.
That bags are.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it makes sense to do. I mean, I watched how quick they pulled up information, but we're having the meetings. That everything is there and, and to have that would be.
We're not gonna get rid of the paper maps, but if we can reference this, I, I think we'll all use it much more and.
My, my question is, with the data plan. Do you have a phone that you currently use that is city? And would we, would it be better just to use your phone as a hotspot instead of having a separate data plan? Because then you wouldn't be paying, you know what I mean? Like having two data plans, if we, I don't know if this is true, do, if we pay for his data plan for city use or not?
He receives in the while once for use of his own person.
Right.
Okay.
But I could have a flip phone. You know, I don't have to have data. You know what I mean?
Right.
So, say one of our employees wants to use this device.
Yeah.
I, I think it needs to have its own, its own plan. I don't think we can.
So a lot of times you'll use this, we use that device, are, we have the data plans and you'll take. Pictures that are geo-referenced and you'll be able to track yourself on a map and use GPS and. Use different things that you need that data for in the field.
Okay.
Um, that really do make it more user-friendly, cause you'll overlay aerial photos and, and different. pieces of information that probably are pretty helpful. So. And, and I like the idea, if you're out having to do something, um, you know, like Joe was saying, being able to take pictures, if there's a specific situation while you're. While you're out, you can take a picture and it, it comes back to City Hall, um, and get responses.
Yep, and, and Stan Tech has a ton of information, plans, documents that we can. Acquire from them, uh, and it, it's gonna be a win-win for everyone. I can see in the future. Uh, having one or two, uh, kinda like the fire department, you know, they, they've got the one and the two and. I think in the future, each truck will have one, I, I really do, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the iPad, the mount, and the Horizon service plan.
Okay, next, any other comments? I think going forward in the future, when this developments come into the city, you should be able to download all those, I would hope. Continue to build that database.
If they electronically spell out their time sheets, time recording.
Not right now, no.
That could be another thing that we could look at, uh, doing electronically at some point.
I had another comment too, was looking at the lawnmower and then what we're doing. Uh, would it be possible for next year that we look in advance and see if we can sell that outright first? Before we buy a new one?
Sure can.
You know, and that way we can move ahead by trying to do what Carl was trying to do, by saving the money and.
If there ain't funds for it, you'd like, uh. Neither that, uh, you can't sell them in the, so fall, you gotta wait till spring to sell it.
Any other comments about the um iPad? Sign that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, pose?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks Kane, thank you. Finally zoning, uh, the minutes on the October thirteen, I mean, your packet. We have not to our resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Which is a. Resolution to the city council, the city of Orno, Minnesota, denying the request for administrative subdivision. And variance to lot size of seven ten Minnesota Avenue South, Orno. So, the, the whereas is our, on the, the. First page. As um. Second of the finding of facts.
And Mike, if you wanna speak to this, this is the one that, the issue that was tabled, what, from labs.
I don't, I mean, I don't think there's much to say, it's just, there was three people, Carl wasn't here, but. Everybody else, there was three requests, there was a request to rezone the property. And then simultaneous to that request, they made a request, uh, the property owners made a request to, for a variance and a lot split. But the council decided to deny the rezoning, and the variance request was based on the new zoning that they denied. So the variance request at that point didn't make any sense, because they were asking for a variance from a. Provision that didn't exist in the zoning district where the property is located. The property would have been located in that zoning district had the council approved the. Rezoning, but the council decided to deny the rezoning. The reason I wanted it tabled was. I looked at the resolution itself, that was, there was a draft resolution to deny the variance at the last meeting. But there was language in there that I did not agree with and I thought needed, I, I, put, put, you know, directly, I think we needed to. Address the legal criteria in the resolution. And it wasn't addressed the practical difficulty standard, so that's the standard by which you grant or deny variances and. I just think you need a reference to that statute and that ordinance in the resolution, so we change.
Like a conditional use or something?
Well, that's a different.
Be granted, huh?
Well, they, I mean, they haven't, all they've applied for is a rezoning of variance and a lot split. They, they'd have to apply for a conditional use. But they haven't done that.
Cause I think it's just a shame, House would said there, a hundred years. And they're, they're willing to go out and beyond, uh, you know, if the. Properties ever sold, if the house burns down, if a tornado comes through.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Destroy it, you know, and I just wanna give them some more options if there's anything.
Yeah, the city planner, Phil. Laid out some options after we met, the day after the, the council denied the rezoning, we met about the options. I think the denial of this, the, uh, uh, adopting this resolution, denying the variance. Really, you can't grant a variance because there is no variance in this zoning district, but. Obviously, there's other, other avenues, you know, and without getting too deep in the weeds, I mean, that's not really before the council tonight, but. You know, they could, this city council could adopt, you know, amend the zoning code. To add a, a new conditional use in the current zoning district and then they could apply for a continued conditional use permit. The city council could rezone not just that property, but all the properties along that street. Um, to the other zoning designation.
Wanna rezone really, but.
Right. I'm not saying so. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not saying it's a good option, I'm just telling you, those are the options. I mean, there's other, other avenues the city could take to allow them to pursue that project. But the threshold matter was, were you gonna grant or deny the rezoning?
Right.
And the council decided to deny the rezoning. So once you made that decision, I think this decision is, it's just a matter of how that resolution was drafted, which is why I wanted it tabled. Moving forward from here into the future, I think the city planner, I mean, Sonny can speak to it, not me, but I think the city planner is willing to work with the. Property owners to. Determine some other path to either do their project or some other project or whatever, but. Um, so I don't, I mean, I don't take a position on it either way, I mean, I, the council decided to deny the rezoning and so. It's my job to make sure that resolution is drafted correctly. I didn't think it was drafted correctly at the last meeting, that's why I wanted it there.
And from my perspective, my direction comes from council as well, so when you, when you table. Uh, the matter last month, until this month, that to me means I have to bring it back this month. Um, and we, we did receive a kind of a late, I'm gonna say late request to. Um, postpone and set further consideration until um, next year, first quarter. But again, because of the windows that we have, the sixty-day memory table. Um, and that initial sixty-day period was expiring before we could meet tonight, which is why we did. The other sixty-day extension. You know, so I'm not sure what, you know, first quarter means, but, but from my perspective. Uh, that's worrisome that we, we're not gonna be able to act by our deadline and, and like, uh. Like as, as indicated, it was, it's really a matter of, um. Taking formal action to coincide with the action that was already taken, that affected this.
Right.
That.
So like, and, and really that's not before the council. The only thing before the council is this resolution. And you have to act within sixty days.
Right.
Plus an additional sixty days, so, um, but yeah, I, I mean, to Carl's point. They can work with the property owner to.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to staff and the property owner to, you know, produce plans and ultimately, it's up to the city council though, you know? Everything goes to the planning commission and it goes to the city council and, you know, Sonny and I don't. Dictate what they can and can't do, I mean, we just kinda lay out the process, um, you know, and then. Process for the council, not necessarily for the property owner, but I think the city planner has indicated that he'd be willing to work, if Sonny approves that, willing to work with them.
And part of my job too is enforcing what's in play. And in place right now with regard to ordinances and city code as well as.
What's the cause for me to go ahead, again, if they wanna ask for. Initial use or something?
Well, they have to go all the way from the very start on it, it's not a part of what this is here.
They'd have to reapply.
They have to go through all the way through, start from scratch.
They'd have to apply for, they remember apply for condition.
Oh, right, great. And I don't do what you're asking, you know? It's uh, yeah, okay, I'm gonna drop, okay, yeah.
I've gotta go, I apologize, I have another meeting in Plainview Township tonight, shoot you now, so.
It's on camera.
Yeah. I don't wanna offend the people in Plainview Township, but I gotta go, so, uh, their meeting started at eight, which is the latest meeting I've ever heard of.
Oh, no.
Yeah, uh, anyway, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. I make a motion, motion every. Approved resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Any other comments?
Yes, if it don't fit, yes, we don't have no choice, you know?
Well, there's.
Square footage and stuff, but there's others, thank you.
The houses, you know, where it's at right now is leaving zone guard two, so there's.
They wanted our two.
They wanted our.
I don't. We don't have anything, I don't, the, the reason this is dying isn't because of the square footage. It's because the other two didn't go through, because I just wanna clarify something. That the thirteen hundred, we've been, we've been splitting lots lower than that lately.
No, we haven't.
Lower than twenty thousand.
No.
Lower than twenty thousand.
There was one that was nineteen thousand five hundred and something.
But we've also had, we've also had many discussions talking about how in the future we're going to. Plan, make a plan to not require lots to be so big.
We're not at that point with anything if there is with any of the ordinances or any of the codes right now.
Right, which is why the, the variance would.
Well, there, there's also a situation of an island that we're looking at and where we're gonna be going. In the future and, and this property sits as an individual. In the future and, and this property sits as an individual island that's out there with where the future development is, that's going with the, this, the city.
It's in a row of houses, again, I'll just, I'll just go back, it's in a row of houses with people, but I don't think have any. I don't think have any desire, the people I know that live there don't have any desire to not live there any longer. And don't have a desire to.
Numerous things, we've already, you know, voted on that, that's already a done deal for what's going on with the rezoning. That's already, that's already been stopped.
What I'm saying is that, just so people understand. That this is not being denied because it's fourteen thousand, you know, thirty thirteen thousand five hundred sixty-one square feet. Because we are talking about eventually making lot requirements smaller and having different levels of, in different areas.
Those are all, those are all different parts of what this conversation is, it's going along with.
Sorry. Uh, if they came and asked for a conditional use, I see nothing wrong with it if the property, if they sell the property. House has got to be leveled.
No, the, that's not true, because we didn't, we didn't go to that place whatsoever, what it is, what it is right now. It's owned as a B two. If they want to put a business inside that house and let that house stand for what's going on, they've got every right to do that.
Give him just a second.
So it's not, it's not saying that they have to level a house at all.
I mean, what I said, Jim, they want it for a house, if they had a conditional use for the house, hold it just a second. If they got a conditional use for the house. And they can't sell the property without tearing the house down, if it burns down. Or a storm tears it down, they can't replace the house, the house is there. I mean, it don't matter what it's zoned. If they own the property and if they, they want the house there. You know, if they go to sell the property for commercial, or if they go to sell it, they got to rip it down.
There's also issues that there are for the abandonment of the house, which is part of the state statute that goes along with it. For any of that stuff to be done, Carl, it has to go through planning and zoning, you can't do anything that there is here. Nothing can, can be done here without going through planning and zoning, and there is nothing that's being done right now. That's there, so, so it's, it's mute, I understand what you're talking about. But right now, the zone is set up and we've, we've agreed with that zoning is gonna be B two. Period, end of story, done.
But you got to remember, you only make recommendations to the council. I mean, there's five of us here, what?
We already, we, we, we went through all five of us that were here, Carl. We were missing that day, but we went through everything.
Now, we're talking about, but they're about something we're ain't even on the table here. Conditional use.
We're not, we're not, you can't bring that up to the council because it's got to go through planning and zoning before you even do it. That's so it's not even, it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist tonight for what we're voting on.
But I think what Carl was saying, there's the possibility of it happening, then it, and, and yes, if it, if it does happen, it has to go back.
You got to go back that way, so.
Right, I know, I, I.
You're just saying there's the possibility that it could happen. But tonight, we have.
And I'm not saying to tear down the house, I never once said that. Never one.
Anyway, back to my statement of, I mean, I just want to make, make it clear for, you know, anybody that. You know, is looking to purchase land here in the future, to build in the future, we are considering making smaller lot sizes and requirements. And that this variance might not pass tonight, but in the future possibly. And, and um.
If it's in the right zone.
Or with a conditional use permit or something else that it passes with. But I just wanted to point out that not necessarily is the number of, of square feet, the reason this isn't passing, but the fact that the rest of it didn't.
There's a lot of issues that are about going along with that.
We're tying the knots of what's been decided by tying in zoning. They have, they have the ability to start over if they want to.
Hmm.
Or they can take advantage of B two and put. Some type of business into it, and they can continue on with their investment of remodeling and everything.
With a building permit.
With a building permit. Okay, so, um.
You made a motion to.
Second.
We have a motion. Like, oh, I'm sorry, what do we have?
You made the motion, um.
I seconded.
Okay, it was a second, okay. Hope for the question, all those in favor?
It's a roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote, there we go, that last page.
Mayor Ihorst.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Berger.
I will abstain.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Cross.
Abstain.
The motion passes.
You.
Resolution passes. Three, two, so. Wait. Parking trails, minutes are in there. Going to petitions what I added, so we have a. An outstanding citizen award committee. Made up of myself, Bohanaburger and Skyder Reckensheim. And there is a, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the outstanding citizen award committee recommendation. And that will be awarded at the December meeting.
I have a second.
Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, sign probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Forward to that. New business. Several things there with. Literally in your packet with. A, B, C, D. Options for discussion. Sonny, do you want to get this through then?
Thank you, Mayor, um, right behind this, excuse me, cover memo is, um, the document. That I had to submit at the time you approved your preliminary budget and tax levy. We, part of that is your truth and tax agent hearing, setting that. Um, I set it in after consulting with the mayor, uh, to coincide with our December meeting, so. Then it's just, uh, kind of an FYI. And then, that goes number one, number two, uh, with the. Four different op, or items, those are, um. Topics for discussion that we could do collectively at one meeting or. Um, split into others, I know, um. Counselor Berger, you had asked about, are we having another workshop, and I, I know that the process for you has been different this year than, than you had in the past. Um. So I leave that to council whether they want to do that, the, um. You just need to know that there is a deadline for setting your final level and certifying that to. Um, and the budget and certifying that to, again. Um, then with regard to B, um, special assessment deferral applications. I believe we've sent out four, um, applications, we've had one, uh, return. And because of the sensitivity of that information, um. I, I would expect that that should be handled in a closed session or as a smaller committee kind of. To determine whether or not that should be approved by council. Um, then, and the unpaid utility bills, um, you have a few of those, um, I think. I think one will be resolved, so there should be one less than what.
Maybe three that we have to take with that.
Yeah, so, um. So that. Um, the goal is obviously, uh, we don't want those accumulating, we want bills paid on time and, um. Regularly, uh, so. Going forward, I am, this is what your practice has been, um, to bring them to council and, and then you review and. Determine whether or not what you want to do with them, um, the last item. Uh, is the city commissions and committees, um, and I, I will make a note too with regard to. Um, I had talked with, um. Seda, Chris Dyson.
Dyson.
Um, and we were, um. I know you had kind of set aside the E D A creation and movement forward. Um, we kind of, he and I talked about maybe perhaps an eleven November thirtieth meeting, to kind of like re. Exert that, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to get, um. Them to honor the existing contract amount that you had agreed to. Before new rates go into effect twenty twenty-three, so. That's just food for that, that kind of falls into that, um, and discussion about when you might want to do. Exert that again, but, um, that's what I'm pushing for, it's obviously saving money.
You said eleven thirty?
November thirtieth, yeah. What day is it?
Eleven, eleven A M, you said?
Eleven thirty. Eleven thirty.
I would say November thirtieth, I don't have a time, I was just saying the day.
You want to make a time?
Is that a date that works for people, that's the first.
For, for Seda, is that what we're talking about right now? Just Seda.
Seda, we're up to talk about you here.
Um, I.
It could be collectively or that's the point is, these are, these are kind of the.
Okay, yeah.
Four, five things that I, yeah, and, and do you want to do them collectively or do you want them?
I see. Um, I definitely want to, I don't know about the rest of you, but I definitely want to revisit the budget one more time as a group before we.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I just think.
Maybe we could do it. Or maybe A and B together.
Yeah.
A and B maybe, but I'm not available on the thirtieth of November, um.
You can do it earlier, it don't have to be the thirtieth.
No, the November thirtieth was only a date that was. Um, Chris and I from Seda was thinking, Mike Warren.
And is that something that the council needs to be a, a part of, or is it something that you're just wanting to?
Is it, yeah, could, is that something that you would meet with Chris first and then bring it back to council?
I've already met with him.
Okay.
And so, what, one, because I was looking for some financing to help. People struggling, might be struggling with, um, which is. Led to the Rochester tax, sales tax funds that have already been used, um. So that door closed, but we did talk about, um, re-energizing the E D A.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, um, and, and it doesn't have to be that date, that was just a date that we were looking at the calendar thinking. Okay, I need time to, you know, go back to my council and see, are they interested in regenerating this idea? And I'd also like to bring in planning and zoning because I think they're going to be part of the mix as well.
Be the planning and zoning meeting?
Oh.
Could it be part of that night?
During the day may be more difficult to get.
No, I'm saying if it wasn't during, if he was, would he be able to come to the planning and zoning?
Meeting, uh, that would be.
Well, December eighth.
I, I think it's good for, but we've already listened to some of the stuff with, with Seda. You know, I think it's really good if we could do this, because what I was looking for. Is to see if we can't look at other funding that there is where people are going to have problems. Financing what's going on with the water and sewer project.
That's what Sonny met with him about.
Right, well, it, it's just opening that door that there is behind it, but we don't have him back on again. Working on that because we haven't brought him back. So we put everything on high, it's okay if we bring him back. Then we can give him the go ahead to take a look at doing it, but until we give him the go ahead, they're ready to do it. I think that Seda is, is going to be very, very important on what we're going to be looking at down the road in the future. And I look at what Pine Island's done with having their Seda. And the new, new projects that they have going on over there, just in that area. That I think we need to do it, and to put it off, I don't think we should put it off, I think we need to.
Put it off, I mean.
Well, that's November thirtieth. I don't know when, when Chris is available.
Or that, oh, not eight days, whatever. I mean, I, you guys can go ahead and do it without me, I'm fine with that, but, um. I like your idea of having it, of having planning and zoning at all, they could just be part of that meeting and then we could be there as well.
Because it's more kickoff, right?
I don't think that's putting it off, um, he said kickoff. Right, no, I'm, I'm referring to what Jim Phillips said, putting it off, I don't really think that putting it off is just finding a date that works better.
That works for every.
I, I, I just think we need to, to get that back. Working again with Seda, I think that's.
Yeah, that's why I suggested having him come to the planning and zoning meeting. The next week, it's just, it's six, it's, it's, it's a few days later. The November.
That's a good idea, you know, and then you'll just have to post there's a special meeting and.
If he's available.
You think, Sonny?
Yeah, it's a week.
Or even, or, or, yeah, it's just a week later, or even if it was, um. Half hour before that meeting or something and planning and zoning could come. People, you know what I mean, it could be at six thirty instead of seven, and then P and Z. Those who can join can join and we can, I don't know, these are just thoughts, I just, I, I'd like to condense meetings. And, and not everybody on this board. And not everybody on this board or on this committee, council is retired and has time during the day, so we have to make sure that people are, are available.
I respect that, I'm just.
So I, I would say. Let's check with P and Z to see what is going to be on our agenda, I know, well, you know, things are quite busy right now.
All right.
Um.
We have one public hearing for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, potentially December, the evening of December eighth.
Yeah. I'll check what.
For P and Z and for Chris Geeson to come. At your P and Z meeting, second Thursday.
So then we, when could we do the final budget, it would just need to be the fifteenth, December fifteenth or earlier, correct?
Um, either, either the fifteenth or December the first.
No, I'm just saying fifteenth is our cutoff.
Really have a budget put in by twentieth.
No.
Fifteenth for the twentieth.
Certified on that day.
Certified on or within five days of December twentieth, so I'm thinking. Something before that and then at the December twentieth meeting, we're ready to adopt.
Our budget, that's our standard.
Seven years apart.
Okay.
Council meeting.
So, well, thanks, Carl. Nobody really wants extra meetings, I don't think, around Christmas, so what can we do to make that happen? What do you guys think?
We started an hour before the plans, so we'll be over, we won't hold you up at all.
Well, we're already going to be early because of what we're doing with Seda, okay, I mean, how.
To the budget.
Oh, okay.
So now we're, I mean, that is a possibility, if we want to make it a really long night for the planning and zoning people, you guys have long meetings lately, so I don't think that that's fair.
But I will tell you, like, on, um, the deferral application, that needs to be decided before the end of the month.
Is that, then that's not something we can do during our regular city council meeting?
No, she's talking before November, before December first, we have to do the deferments.
For December first?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, we got to do sometime next, within the next week and a half.
Oh, well, first we're running into another holiday.
Well, and then.
Twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-second.
And then we should have a meeting, you know, we can wrap that, let that close session. With tying in the unpaid utility bills.
That's a good idea.
So budget and deferral and.
Can get assessed at the.
A, B, and. A, B, and C.
Regular meeting.
Put all those together before one December? If possible.
Could we do it next week? Twenty-first or twenty-second? I'm, I'm out of town starting the twenty-sixth through the third.
Twenty-second is really the best night, Tuesday, week from tonight. Everybody free?
How about Wednesday?
I'm unavailable Wednesday night. It's food shop night and it's.
We do the twenty-second at six P M.
I'm available.
Yeah.
Take care of the budget, the deferments and the unpaid. No, we can't do that. Well, the unpaid, we have to have a public hearing at the very beginning at six P M.
You, you don't have to have a public hearing for
unpaid utility bills.
The unpaid utility bills in terms of discussion, and then you would set, unless you set a public hearing
Now.
Date now for that.
We could put that.
That's.
Well, tomorrow would be one, two, three, four, five days.
Yeah.
Public hearings, a closed hearing and a budget workshop.
We'll get them all done at one time, you know?
Only the special meetings.
Special meeting. At six P M?
Six P M on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Public hearing for unpaid utility bills. Close that. Take care of those actions.
Discussion first, then public hearing, right?
B and C. And then the final budget and the closed session somewhere in that, the assessment.
Renee, so we need ten days for a public hearing?
I think we're missing this.
We gotta host it, so we cannot do a public hearing next week. You can talk about it and set it.
Doesn't matter. We can talk about it and set it, and then does it have to be though before the mix and mixing all these up?
Public hearing on the December twentieth.
That's what I'm wondering. Can we do that? We can do the public hearing on December twentieth, discuss.
Discuss it, figure out who has, who's behind and then.
And what, what day the public hearing would be on the twentieth of December then, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So we have.
And we're gonna try to narrow that down.
Unpaid bills, unpaid utility bills on the twentieth. And we can do the final bud- workshop and assessment on November the twenty-second at six P M.
I'm gonna forget why we're gathering that night.
Okay, so, and could we not also consider that final piece then?
The budget?
No, talking about commissions and committees.
On the twentieth?
On the twenty-second you talked about, right?
Barely.
Yeah, well.
I'll keep it short.
So November.
What happened to committees? We can also, we can also talk about that in January.
No, I want it decided ahead of time.
I think that's a good idea, a, and if we don't make it that night, we need to then add it to the December twentieth agenda.
Right.
We're in the public hearing first.
Well, we've already moved it from last month to this month.
This one's a good idea. It'll be until Christmas.
I know, I was just gonna say that. I don't know, we're not.
Second.
Second.
Twenty-second.
Second, okay.
Budgets, second.
And deferment application.
That's on the second as well.
Why you keep saying second? November twenty-second?
The twenty-second.
Yeah.
That's what I thought I heard.
No, eleven, eleven twenty-two, twenty-second. Next Tuesday. Right, next Tuesday?
Okay, eleven twenty.
At six P M.
Six o'clock.
At six.
At six P M. I'll send you an agenda with all this stuff right in front of you.
And special assessment. There summarized unless you slip.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna start out the November twenty-second, six o'clock meeting with a closed session to talk about handling special assessment deferral application or plural or singular plural, so that will be number one. And then we can move into talking about, um, I'm gonna say discussion of the utility bills. Do we want that in closed session as well or?
Let's. Let's just have a December twentieth meeting.
That's the public hearing, but we can talk about how many we need to like move forward in that process.
So they closed, right, for that on the twenty-second?
Yeah. Just a brief discussion.
Not a discussion, right?
Yeah.
No fortunes.
Right. Cause you're already deciding tonight to hold a public hearing on those, if any, at December meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, then we'll talk about final budget workshop. And then time for meeting. The city commissions and meetings.
Everything's basically eleven twenty-two and then twelve twenty.
Yep.
Yes.
And then we have to figure out the pinnacle with, with Seda.
Right.
For planning and zoning.
Number eight.
Yeah. Yep, at what time did you say? And start that at six thirty?
If.
Or which one?
Seda, pre. Just a little bit ahead of.
If you, if you think, if he thinks that'll be enough time, if you think that's enough time, a half hour ahead of time, and then invite P and Z to join us. Or tie it into P and Z, but I don't know how much.
P is at, at seven, I.
And you guys pull so late. I don't wanna tie anything into that meeting. I would like to do it ahead of time so that, you know.
No, no, I'm with you and I'm just trying to figure if a half hour is gonna be enough.
Six fifteen. There's a P and Z on board. I don't think that's gonna be enough. I'm gonna get all of their questions answered, but. And I don't know what kind of presentation he's gonna give us. He gave us one presentation back in March, so there's like four presentations.
Well, could we maybe send the presentation out ahead of time that he already gave us in March? To P and Z. We can forward that to everybody. They can review it and then come with questions.
Excellent.
We can do it maybe at six o'clock instead of six thirty. And try that, that give this an hour to be able to work on, which is more time.
I think that's fine if you guys agree. You're the ones with the late nights.
I mean, we do six o'clock for Goldfish, so.
Well, I know, but you guys, those P and Z meetings could have been long, so I just wanted to take your time into account.
I think an hour.
We have to sign.
I think we need an hour.
Thank God.
Are you ready to start?
You can be number one.
Again?
Yeah, this is canvassing board. This is not.
Okay, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion.
Not your payments.
Make a decision on the deferment piece. Did you reach a conclusion on that?
We're gonna talk about that at the.
One of them meetings.
In a closed session on.
Is it, well, on how to handle, is that the same deferment?
The paper question pretty straightforward. On stop and Fitzgerald. Financials, we have a new bank. And get a chance to review the invoice. Water summary. Oh, that was a, that was just a tad of one piece paper. Yeah, for the month of October, we used about five thousand one hundred seventy-two gallons. And which compares with you. Any questions? You can talk to Sunny and I, or Tom Anthony, we talked this afternoon. If there's no other comments on the consent agenda. All is in favor, signature, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Close, it's approved.
Hold on. We forgot.
Attendance.
Well, yeah, and how.
Oh, our pay.
Please involve that.
I have no problem.
Would it work to just pay us through October or make it?
Aye.
I think you have to have one meeting.
I don't, I don't care.
Yeah, don't matter.
I don't care, whatever is easiest. For you, whatever, it's, I, I just. If it, you wanna.
I had my list started or actually, I guess I'll have to wait now. Until December? Okay.
Well, the.
Well, wait, what did he just say? I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Yes.
December?
End of December. Annual pay.
Well, that's the problem. Or we, oh, wait, we wait until this, the end of December? Oh, until we get the check.
Person's bond is taken care of.
Got it. I thought you were suggesting, but I thought you were suggesting doing it, ending it earlier. Because is that hard to do at the end of December for payroll at the end of the year?
No, I just, like I say, I just have an aversion to paying in advance.
That way we'll be paying on time, so it'll be fun.
That's fine.
The other, the other thing you, we could do is, you know, theoretically, change up the practice, that's, that's what I do, right? Is, is a, like through October and then know that that November, December, you'll get like early very, very late in the twenty twenty-two or very early.
And would that be easier because that's how you pay the fire department, you know what I mean, the rest of? Would it be?
No, it's getting two checks and they're getting more.
No, no, I'm just saying like, then you know it's that time of year to pay, you know what I mean, to pay your committees.
Can I ask, I mean, I, I don't know, this may be a stupid question, but I mean, like, why don't, if, if you're, if the ordinance says you earn so much a month, why, why don't you get a check every month and, and then you're, you're tracking meetings only for a month, not.
Because the amount of money is not worth having you write out a check every month? I mean.
That's, I, that's.
I honestly, I.
Throwing it out there.
I don't have a preference.
Well, I just, I just think, you know.
We're, we're, we're not in this for the money.
That's what I'm saying. I'm like, I feel like.
There might be another change for our personnel policy too, cause I think it states that their annual salary may, it might, they expect personnel policy.
I don't, are, your pay isn't addressed in the personnel policy as anything.
True.
It's in city code. It's in the city code.
City code, I guess.
That defines like you, what you earn per month at the meeting, yeah. So I'm not deviating.
We don't wanna make any more work for you, so I guess it's.
Yeah, I, I know, it's, I'm telling you, it's, it would be easier, I, please, correct me if I'm wrong. It would be easier to do it on a monthly basis. Easier for you guys to track your meetings on a monthly basis. And then we just keep. Well, I check with some old friends. Long the check is.
Now we'll make a vote. So we're okay with monthly then, starting?
In January or?
Yeah, in January, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll, we'll do them through October and then November, December will be a separate check. So make sure Renee's got your time, meetings, attendance sheets through October.
Would it be just the way to land the year? Then you go to.
Take it home.
Yeah. Twenty, well, and now we know. And we can, gonna be here for the next couple of years, so for sure. So we'll just make sure that.
I mean, if we were to go first to get it, it'll be, and that way, and then you go on a monthly.
Yeah.
Whether you do two months. And, and to be clear, you handed these out, you want everyone to just make sure that it's right.
Turn it, and turn it back in.
Right, I mean.
Really try to get double checks, so.
That was quick.
Carl's on the drop there, yeah.
I make a motion, meeting adjourned at nine forty.
Eight forty, my god. Yes, um, second.
Favor say aye.
I need a minute. So what was the motion you made? And Carl seconded.
Adjourned.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the word motion, but I didn't hear when.
He kinda whispered it.
And I, I'm thinking that was unanimous, yes. Thank you, Renee.